The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Waburn City Council, held in the council chambers at 6:00 PM, Monday, October 23rd, 2023. First line of business, our council is all here tonight, the first line of business is the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning and priorities meeting, held October 10th, 2023. You have a motion?
I'll make that motion, your worship.
Second.
I'll second it, your worship.
Discussion, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Additions to the agenda, Mr. Warren?
Yeah, thanks, your worship. I have one addition tonight, it's under motions, so 7A, Urban Highway Connector Program, expression of interest.
Number seven, 7A is...
That's correct.
Describe it again.
It's the Urban Highway Connector Program, expression of interest.
Seeing none, we had, there's no public...
Your worship, we'll need a motion for that.
Do we have a motion to...
Your worship, I'll make a motion that we add 7A, the expression of interest for the Urban Highway Connector Program.
Second.
Call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. No public hearings and notices, delegations, proclamations, petitions. Tonight, we have the Waburn Mountain Bike Delegation, representing, Trevor Testier, representing, if you would come forward, please, Trevor.
Hi, I'm Mike Mankel, we've got Dave Hodgkin and Trevor Testier here, representatives from Waburn Mountain Bike Society, or Waburn Mountain Bike Clubs, and Waburn Run Club, I suppose. And we're kind of, first off, we want to say thank you for allowing us to build trails over by the Tadagoa Trail System there, and we're grateful, we've been kind of in talks with you already, and you guys have always given us permission to move ahead, and you've also done some work in the past also out there, so we appreciate that, and I guess today, we're just kind of gonna give a proposal on, maybe a bit of an ask on some work, to allow us to kind of build more trails and focus on that aspect instead of maintaining what we already have.
I just want to describe what our club is, we are dedicated volunteers, we are an official nonprofit group, we are affiliated with the International Mountain Biking Association, and in turn, that allows us better rates on our insurance, so all our, all our trails up on the hill are fully insured, and the paper, all the paperwork's been passed on to Andrew, Director of Leisure Services, and just want to reiterate, we definitely appreciate the use of the land up there, it's, it's kind of land nobody really uses, and now, we see a lot of people up there on foot, on bikes, seen somebody on a unicycle up there a little while ago, it's, seems to be very popular, anyway.
So with that, I think we should just start with the video, if we could put that...
Step closer to the mic, please.
Yeah, if we could just start with the video, so maybe I just draw everyone's attention to the video here, displaying the trail system we have, which is over .16 of a hectare, so we can play it, and maybe I'll have Dave just explain some of this here.
Sure, I'll do my best, anyway, I've ridden them a thousand times, I'm sure.
That one, the wheels going around, is it?
That's, yes.
That's that unicycle.
Yeah, that's the unicycle.
That's what happened when I tried to ride the unicycle.
Hey, yeah, me too, that's why I stick with two. If it doesn't play, oh, there we go, so right there, you can see the paved Tadagoa, and to the right, you can see our trails that run through the woods, really, there's not much I can explain, other than anything you see that's not paved, are trails that we make, right there, they're very clear, they're very non-intrusive, without anybody maintaining them, like, if we don't have time and neglect the trail, the grass just grows right back. We don't have anything permanent out there, except for one small bridge that goes over a few rocks, just to play safe, we don't want anybody smashing. All our trails are marked with difficulty ratings, we still have a lot more signage to put up, unfortunately, most of the work's done by myself and Mike and other people who have families and jobs and everything, so we just don't have enough time to get at it all ourselves.
So, with this, for these trail systems to be maintained and created, it takes about 80 hours every year to work on them, with about 40 hours being just maintenance of it. So with that being said, time for coming to city council, working on grants, or even expanding the trail system, gets put on to maintaining it, and with that, there's a pretty significant group of people who use the trail system, whether it be hikers, mountain bikers, or unicyclists, and actually, just people walking their dog, too. So just in reference, Waburn Mountain Bikers Club has 278 members, and Waburn Run Club has 213 members. With that as well, these organizations do things outside of just these trails, they work with the kids to show them the area, and we've even had a necrologist kind of come and show some of the natural flora that is in these trails. If we scroll down a bit there, we, oh, oh, this one's from the past one, that's okay. So one of the things we did do is, we looked around Waburn to do an assessment of where are the mowed areas, and where are, where, how much mowing would we be asking for, because the ask today is that we're asking for one hour per week, between the spring and fall, to maintain the trails with cutting the grass on them, and we have .16 of a hectare. So currently, the city of Waburn mows and cuts where there's unused portions, such as ditches and areas, of 14.17 hectares, which is about the size of Jubilee Park. We cut ditches and side roads, or areas of grass equivalent to what Jubilee Park is in, around our ditches and Walmart and stuff. So I think one of the things we're asking is just, could we have those trail systems mowed, so then we can encourage more people to use them, and we would even, as opposed to calling the Trail Society Waburn Mountain Bikers, we would change the name to Waburn Trail Society, to hopefully encourage it amongst other people as well. So that would be our ask here tonight. I, I'm wondering if we could pull up the, or do you, do you guys all have this presentation, which is different than? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it was just emailed to council, we just received it.
So maybe if I just show you in this presentation here, we looked at how much mowing are we asking for, just in a perspective to Jubilee Park, and we highlighted it in this little white box, it's about the size of an outfield in Jubilee Park, which is the size of our trails that we'd be asking to be mowed. So I just go to, so the ask is here, and I'll pull it over here, yeah, we would, our ask is, is that if we could start mowing and maintaining those trails for one hour per week, starting in the spring and going until the fall, and hopefully start that in spring of 2024. So today, that is our ask, would we be able to get that?
Thank you for your presentation, questions?
Thanks, your worship, thanks, sorry. Thanks for, first off, thanks for the trail system, I've used it a couple times, I've realized my age has impacted my ability to enjoy it as much as I maybe should. I love the whole thing up there, my question to you, and this is an impossible question, but if you have any sense of the volume of users that you see, and I know it's hard, it's no different than asking Andrew how many people walk the trails, the Tadagoa Trail, I get that, but do you have a sense beyond sort of Facebook member, I'm a member of both those Facebook groups, you know what I mean?
Well, I'm out there quite often, and of those 80 hours I'm out there, I would say 70 of them, I see at least one other person, but then there's also like, an entire family out there, and you do see people come up from the trail through there, and they're walking the trails, they're not just passing through to the parking lot, so I do see, I would say, from one to three people out there, 80% of the time, I'm out there, and I'm out there quite a lot during the summer, so.
Fair enough.
I would see quite a bit.
And representing Waburn Run Club, we run there three times a week for at least an hour a day, so I guess the, you know, three times a week for an hour kind of thing, too, and in groups of eight, usually, and if anyone's willing or wanting to join, we run on Thursday night at 7:00 PM and Saturday at 8:00 AM, so, just to keep it in mind.
Sure, thanks, guys.
Well, I just want to add one more thing, as, as far as volume, it seems every time I go out there, too, now, I'm seeing more and more families, more and more kids riding the trails, and getting feedback from people I know that they have their kids out there, and they're loving the trails. Thank you.
First off, guys, thank you again for what you do, you're an example of what, what clubs like that can become, when everyone's willing to put a little time and a little
elbow grease into it, so well done. Maybe an easier question to answer is, you've alluded to, is usage trending up? Like, are you seeing more people progressing up there?
More and more people, all the time.
Because I think, I mean, that's really what we're looking for, right?
Yeah.
And what, what time of year do you do this, like, is it all year round, or is there a season, or?
Well, it's almost over now. Typically, over the winter time, we get out there and we try and snowshoe and pack the trails down, so we can either walk or fat bike them, sometimes we'll get out there with a cross-country skis as well.
Are you asking because you're wondering what your commitment will be, like, how long that'll be, or are you asking just because?
I'm really more curious about usage, I mean, not, not that it hinges on this at all, but, I mean, are people out there just from April to November, or do you get out there all year round, or?
Well, there are, there is a...
We run it all year round, so like, you know, we either use the paved trail system or run in there with cleats and stuff like that, so from the Run Club perspective, all year round, but it wouldn't need to be maintained by the city, because we pack it ourselves for the ones who are dedicated in the winter, so.
But definitely trending up, I see more and more people there all the time, and much like Mike, I'm out there five or six days a week.
Awesome, thanks a lot, guys.
I guess, go ahead, John.
Thanks, guys, for the presentation, really appreciate it, the, I believe you mentioned that you put in about 80 hours in maintenance through the course of the year?
80 hours of volunteer time would be dedicated towards the trails with both expansion and maintenance, and maintenance is about that 20 to 40-hour mark, depending on the year.
Yeah, this year, it was a little more.
Could you just describe to us what that entails, as far as maintenance goes, and what part, and how many people do you have in the club that actually, that are part of that maintenance, maintenance group, and what other aspects the city provides to you?
And maybe I wanted to comment on that, is that Dave and Mike are trail building experts, they're the best in the town, and probably, we could create some really good trails with what we have out there, so generally speaking, these two do the majority of the work on the trail system, so they have to do, they do a significant amount of maintenance, as well as trying to do the expansion of it, so that, that's where the challenge comes in, because in, for the most part, they've been doing that alone, and without support, other than the ability, the space that was given, and then in previous years, there was a little bit of cutting of the grass, yeah.
Yeah, so like, the lowest skill maintenance would be cutting the grass, we have the numbers here, a good portion of it, you can get in there with a riding mower, and just cut once, and it's done, basically, we don't have a riding mower, so it takes us more time, it also pushes the weeds back a bit, because some of those weeds, and some of the trails get high, and then they kind of lean in a bit, so the riding mower could just push those back, so that's, that takes up a bunch of the time, and then building a new trail, we kind of do that, and then we really try to get down to the dirt, so it stays hard, and, like, a nice surface, I suppose.
We remove the vegetation, and then we will shape the trail, we will dig it up with pickaxes, shovels, and we do it all by hand right now, till we find some sponsorship from, of Manil's or something like that, but dig it all out by hand, shape it, shape it into berms, make things so they're not off camber, make it so when you do go ride those trails, you're not going to just fall off the edge of the trail into the, into the woods, remove the rocks, remove any nasty tree branches in the way, and those sort of things, and then as far as trimming, we spend from April to July, mostly just doing trimming, most of our building doesn't come until, until the fall time, when the, when the grass stops growing so much, basically.
So it's a small group of people that are maintaining?
Small group doing the maintenance, larger group utilizing it.
Well, I applaud your dedication to, to the project, for sure.
We go a little insane if we don't.
Thanks, guys.
Mr. Van Bessie?
What you're looking for from the city is the grass cutting?
Yes.
Just looking at the layout and everything, I'm just wondering how, it's different for you guys to go out there individually and cut with a lawnmower than it is for us to send an employee out there, up and down, around the hills, and I'm wondering how possible that is, or how safe it is to send a, a staff out there and do that.
Last year, I believe, was it last year, that they did our main, we have one main trail that feeds everything, it's, it's a green trail called It Begins, and last year, Parks, I guess, had some extra time or extra manpower, and they went through and mowed that every two weeks or so, and then we took care of the rest, and so, riding lawnmower will work on a trail like that, and a few of the existing trails that were up there that we've taken over, and other than that, it would be a push-behind whipper snapper. We use the, you know, a powered one, but one of those push-behinds would make short work of it.
Okay, thank you.
I guess my question is, Andrew, this is your area of operations? Okay, pardon me?
Yes. Yes, it is, yeah.
Okay, and so, and you did some already last year for them?
Yeah, so what we've been doing since Dave came to us back in 2020, I think it was, when he first approached the city, with his idea for the bike trails, is basically, we have a meeting at the start of the year, and then they have our Parks Managers on speed dial, and if they ever require anything from us, or if they have some plans at the start of the year, they'll meet with him, and then they may have touchpoints throughout the year if they need, but they'll meet with him and try to figure out, okay, we want to do this, what can you guys do to help us, and then we try to fit in as much as we can with whatever resources we have that summer. Problem is, our resources kind of change from year to year, we're so dependent on seasonal staff, and the nuances of what spring and summer can be, so we just kind of play it by ear and do what we can as we can.
And we completely understand how staff shortages go, and budgets and such, and that's why we came to you at the end of the season, to look forward for next year, and we definitely appreciate everything that Andrew's done, he's been 100% helpful, same with Curtis, right from the start.
You're a registered nonprofit, are you?
Yes.
From that, we'll, any other questions? So, thank you for your presentation, leave it with us, and Andrew and Matthew will discuss matters, and it's brought to our attention, and we'll go from there.
That's good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just for, if there's any future reference with the proposal, that one's our past one, so please reference this one, and if there's any required information aside from this, as we did, do a land area analysis of all areas mowed in the city, and we'd be happy to share that in comparison to what we're asking for, so, thank you.
Thank you.
No reports of standing committees, consent agenda, we have just one here tonight, the
Building Department Report for September, do you have a motion, please?
We'll, I'll make that motion, your honor, that consent agenda containing the September Building Department Report be accepted as presented.
I'll second that.
I was just saying, I appreciate you referring to me like a judge, but it's your worship, not your honor, your honor is reserved for the judges, this is...
He does give a little judgment.
Yeah, yeah, but that is, that is the judges, not the, it's your worship here, so, go ahead.
I will second that, your worship.
Call, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. The, just up and watching the swearing in of a new lawyer, and it was your honor, is there, and I'm going, yes, that's, that's the judges' realm. Motions, Mr. Warren, 7A, Urban Highway Connector, expression of interest?
Yeah, our Director of Engineering, Jen Wilkins, and we'll speak to that tonight, your worship.
Thank you. So the city of Waburn is providing an expression of interest for the Urban Highway Connector Program, UHCP, through the province of Saskatchewan. The Urban Highway Connector Program promotes safe and efficient movement of people and goods through Saskatchewan cities. It also provides an open and consistent framework to support the municipal management of urban highway connectors. Saskatchewan's 16 cities control urban highway connectors within their boundaries under provincial legislation and jurisdiction. These connectors are roadways connecting highways through the cities. The Ministry of Highways and Infrastructure is requesting expression of interest that will identify priorities in each city for urban highway connector improvements. Any funding under the UHCP will be driven by the provincial budget process and complete, and compete with Ministry, Highways and Infrastructure priorities. The city of Waburn has identified four projects as a priority for the UHCP. Priority one is to rebuild the intersection of First Avenue and Government Road slash King Street, and repave First Avenue from the intersection to Second Street. Priority two is to remove the damaged asphalt surface and repave First Avenue from Second Street to Thirteenth Street. Priority three is to remove the damaged asphalt surface and repave King Street from First Avenue to Fifth Avenue North. And priority four is to remove the damaged asphalt surface and repave First Avenue from Thirteenth Street to Sixteenth Street. All these locations are part of our truck route and see a lot of heavy truck traffic, these areas are showing significant surface damage, and have not had any major work done in the past 10 years. The city does a pothole patching program on both roads every year, we want to repair the surface before we see damage to the subsurface and base. Both areas are a Level 3 in terms of our UHCP agreement, and would receive up to 70% funding from the government of Saskatchewan. So as you can see, I have included maps for all the four priorities. In order to move the expression of interest, the government of Saskatchewan requires a resolution stating city council agrees to meet legislated standards, to meet the terms and conditions of the UHCP program, to conduct an open tendering process, to manage the construction of the project, to fund the municipal share of the project, to fund ongoing operation and maintenance costs, and to follow any mitigation measures as required by the Federal Impact Assessment Act and the Environmental Assessment Act of Saskatchewan. It is recommended that the Waburn City Council provide the province of Saskatchewan with the required resolution for the UHCP expression of interest for Priority 1, 2, 3, and 4 projects.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that city council support the expression of interest to the province of Saskatchewan for the Urban Highway Connector Program to allow for the following projects in order of priority for the city of Waburn. Number one, the intersection of First Avenue and Government Road slash King Street, east to Second Street. Number two, First Avenue from Second Street to Thirteenth Street. Number three, King Street from First Avenue to Fifth Avenue North. And number four, First Avenue from Thirteenth Street to Sixteenth Street.
I can second that, your worship.
Discussion, Jennifer, oh, okay, go ahead.
One question, then, on Priority 4, why is it only 13th to 16th, and not 13th to 18th?
Basically, we'd be buddying up to where we completed the intersection work right now.
And not continuing past there?
At this time, no, we haven't identified that, not to say that it couldn't change, when we, they've asked that we can, we usually only get to submit two, and they said we could submit up to four, chances of us receiving the fourth right now are slim, that it could be adjusted before then.
Okay, thank you.
What is our portion percentage-wise?
So we would pay 30% on these projects, every one of them would have a, up to 70% cost to the ministry.
So very important to get this grant?
Yeah, this grant is, is very useful for us, it's how we were able to do the First Avenue and Sixteenth Street intersection, it was the same program for that, so now we are continuing on, where we provide expression of interest to the Ministry of Highways every year, and we have actually submitted the top two, or, we've submitted Project 1 and 3 before, Project 1 and 2 were sort of combined, and then we submitted Project 3 as well, so we've submitted these previously to the ministry, so we keep, we will submit the same ones again, so they understand that our priorities haven't changed.
You have other questions? So, we have, the motion is on four, call the question, all in favor, carried unanimously. Introduction of Bylaws, Bylaw 233465, Dog and Cat Bylaw Amendment, Danette?
Thanks, your worship. So earlier in the year, the Police Commission had discussed the Dog and Cat Bylaw, and recommended that council look at the bylaw, just to provide some clarity around some wording, specifically on the number of dogs and cats permitted, not the number so much as just the wording around how to enforce that bylaw, previously, it had said, no person shall possess three dogs or cats, but the intent of the bylaw has always been per household, not per person in the household, so we just wanted to clean up that wording, so that was just one of the, the recommendations from the Police Commission, and then just, also, the Police Commission just asked that the police chief, the bylaw officer, and myself, the city clerk, just have a look at kind of enforcement under dangerous dogs and cats. So after some review, the police chief, the bylaw officer, provided me with a few recommendations, so some wording was updated to add in where, if an animal was to attack or bite a person, to also add in domestic animals, so if an animal attacked one of your pets, they would also be considered dangerous under this, this amendment, then just some other wording to allow for a judge, if it went to court, to be able to declare if an animal is dangerous, if it bites a person, or, you know, attempts to bite, or seems to be ferocious in any way. So some of these items were included in this amendment, then there was also just one portion added under miscellaneous and fences, I'll just read the portion that the police chief had recommended. If at the time of the offense, the owner is not available to stop a continuation of the offense, the animal control officer or any peace officer may seize the animal and deliver such animal to the pound. All dogs or cats seized and kept in the pound shall be confined for a period of 72 hours, if not claimed and repossessed by the owner, may be sold for the cost of boarding. If such impounded dog or cat is not claimed and repossessed or sold within a period of 72 hours from the time of impoundment, the said dog or cat may be destroyed or disposed of at the discretion of the person designated by the mayor or city manager. The owner shall be required to pay the cost of pound fees before the dog or cat may be repossessed. So basically, we're just, you know, I, I would recommend that council give this, pass this amendment, and could provide up to the three readings tonight if they so wish, and then we would, those, that bylaw would be amended effective after the third reading of that bylaw.
Do you have a motion, please?
Thanks, your worship, I would motion that Bylaw 20233465, to amend Bylaw 20063073, the city of Waburn Dog and Cat Bylaw, be read a first time tonight, and brought back to a future meeting for second and third readings.
Your worship, I'll second that motion. Discussion?
Thank you, sir worship, I think it's really important that we do bring this back to a further meeting, or a meeting in the future, just so that the public has the opportunity to weigh in on any concerns they may have, and that council has the opportunity to ask some questions on how this is going to be enacted in the future.
Call the question, all in favor, first reading is passed, and this will be brought back to which council meeting?
The next meeting is November 13th, so I can bring that back to that meeting if council so wishes.
Okay, we so wish. Bylaw 233467, zoning amendment, serves school property, we have a second and third reading, do you wish to, and just before I do this, there was, do you wish to do the staff report here again, or you've had already the staff report?
Would you like me to go through it, your worship?
I believe we had it last time, if you wanted to hit the highlights, just that word, change the zoning from which zone to which zone.
I can go through that, your worship, so we have a request from a number company to have 316 Fifth Avenue Southeast rezoned from an R2... So we have a request from a number of company to have three-sixteen Fifth Avenue Southeast rezoned from an R-two to an R-three. So we did a public notice on this after our first reading on September twenty-fifth to raise to seventy-five meters. We also provide notice to our district planning commission. Received no objections or no responses from both the district planning commission or from the public. So a little background on this property. In February of two thousand twenty-three, the southeast Corinthian School Division sold the parcel to the applicant. The site is the former location of the Sauer School. And the applicant plans to build a multi-level senior residential care complex on the property, which is permitted within our three zone.
Okay. Danette, give an explanation, if you were, because we're going to do a public hearing on this bylaw. And on the bylaw, we put a side on the Dog and Cat Bylaw, there won't be any public hearing, difference being why?
Basically, your worship, anything to do with zoning, and not always with zoning, but in this particular case, the Act, the Planning Development Act does require for us to do a public hearing. Whereas in the Dog and Cat Bylaw, there is no requirement under any legislation where we would have to do a public hearing. So we will have to do a formal public hearing tonight for this particular bylaw as per the Planning and Development Act.
With that being said, I now declare this public hearing open and invite any parties wishing to speak regarding the bylaw. You may come forward now at this time. So this is first call. I ask a second time, this is second call for anyone who wishes to speak to this bylaw twenty-three, twenty-two-three, thirty-four, sixty-seven. Third and final call for anyone from the public who wishes to speak to bylaw twenty-three, twenty-two-three, thirty-four, sixty-seven. Seeing no one, I declare this hearing closed, and we can proceed with second and third reading. Do we have a second reading?
Your worship, I would move that bylaw twenty-two-three, thirty-four, sixty-seven, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw twenty-twenty, thirty-four, twelve, for the purpose of rezoning the property at three-sixteen Fifth Avenue Southeast, parcel number one-zero-eight-nine-one-five-one-two-seven, block C, plan nine-zero-R-five-six-seven-eight-one, from R-two residential semi-detached to R-three residential multiple housing, be read a second time.
I can second that, your worship.
Discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Carrie DeNance, please. If you would, please.
Your worship, I would move that bylaw twenty-two-three, thirty-four, sixty-seven, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw twenty-twenty, thirty-four, twelve, for the purpose of rezoning the property at three-sixteen Fifth Avenue Southeast, parcel number one-zero-eight-nine-one-five-one-two-seven, block C, plan nine-zero-R-five-six-seven-eight-one, from R-two residential semi-detached to R-three residential multiple housing, be read a third time and passed.
Your worship, I'll second that.
Discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Carrie DeNance, please. Moving forward, we have another zoning amendment. Bylaw twenty-two-three, thirty-four, sixty-eight, N-C to R-two. And Mr. Warren will speak on it, and we will do first reading only.
Your worship, if I may, I have to declare conflict on this one, and we'll recuse.
Go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. So we have a zoning bylaw amendment application from Bree Patterson, requesting that the property located at three-forty-three Second Street be rezoned from N-C, which is Neighborhood Commercial, to R-two, which is residential semi-detached. So if council proceeds a first reading of this bylaw tonight, we'll send out a public notice. And then we'll come back for a public hearing on November thirteenth at a regular scheduled council meeting. So in October two thousand seventeen, this property was rezoned from R-two to the N-C, so Neighborhood Commercial. The reason for the amendment was at that time to allow that to be converted to use of the existing commercial. And now she's asking to have it moved back from that, back to residential use. So I do have a map of the property and location of the property, right in the Corinth Street. So within the zoning bylaw of twenty-twenty, thirty-four, twelve, the applicant has requested the line be rezoned from the R-two. The R-two zone permits semi-detached dwelling units, permitted in the R-one zone, while recognizing the demand for conversion of older, larger detached dwellings to rental housing. It's designed to conserve the general character of the established neighborhoods and encourage the renewal of existing housing. The following is listed of permitted uses, which this request is, within the R-two zone. So council has two options in front of them tonight. So option one is council give first reading of bylaw two thousand twenty-three, thirty-four, sixty-eight, being a bylaw to amend the zoning bylaw to rezone the aforementioned lands from N-C to R-two and direct administration to advertise the bylaw as per a public notice policy. And then option two is to refuse, and if there's a refusal tonight, to provide that back to the applicant. So a recommendation from council that council gives first reading of bylaw two thousand twenty-three, thirty-four, sixty-eight to amend the zoning bylaw as mentioned above.
Your worship, I'll make a motion that bylaw two thousand twenty-three dash thirty-four, sixty-eight, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw two thousand twenty dash thirty-four, twelve, for the purpose of rezoning the property at three-four-three Second Street Northeast, lots one, two, and three, block seven-five, plan S-four-eight-four-zero, from northwest Neighborhood Commercial to R-two semi-detached, to be a first, to be read a first time, and then staff be directed to advertise bylaw two thousand twenty-three dash three-four, six-eight as per the public notice policy.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? Seeing none, call the question, all in favor? Carrie DeNance, please. So that will come back again roughly when?
Your worship, it'll come back on the November thirteenth meeting.
Unfinished business?
Your worship, we need to get Council Janki back.
Unfinished business, there is none. We're going to new business. This is our preliminary budget. I guess disclosure to the public on this. Is there going to be a date of open house afterwards, Matthew, Seth, or anything?
Yeah, your worship, I'll go through in the presentations. So we're looking at open house on November the seventh. There'll be two times for that, one at eleven-thirty till one-thirty, and the second will be from five till seven. We have not determined the location. Once we do, we'll advertise that immensely, so people know where that is.
Okay. I'll turn it over to Finance Director, Ms. Howell, if she would be so kind as to give us this presentation, please.
Yes, thank you. All right, so the preliminary budget has been submitted and put together. We've based it on what the visions were for the city that were passed as a community for all the mission, growth through opportunity. So the preliminary budget, it primarily deals with the municipal budget, and this serves as an outline for how the money that comes into the city should be spent to maintain and improve the city. The strategic plan that council has put together and their direction and priorities to establish the guidelines for the initial steps in preparing the annual operating capital budget. And as Matthew said, we are going to have a public engagement on November seventh, and that will be communicated. So we did have a citizen survey in the fall, or sorry, in the spring. And based on that, we took some of the feedback from that into account. So what we did see is economic development was a big trigger for people to reduce city spending, maintain and increase capitals, and increase our level of service. So as in the past, we do have a balanced budget approach. We maintain tax policies to keep the city competitive. We balance the rate pair's interests with continued growth. We balance the department's requests to continue our, to have a high level of service and programs. We address maintenance and replacement of major capital, and we set out short and long-term plans. And we try to manage to increase our supply and capital costs. So we added this slide this year that shows our org chart of how the budget is. So at the top, there's the city budget overall, and we have three different, basically revenue streams or three different funds that the budget is based on. So our general operating, this is primarily funded through taxation and grant money with a little bit of fees. So throughout this, it shows that general government, police sources, fire services, planning and development, leisure services, parks, engineering, public works, facilities, fleet, and the infrastructure revitalization program are all funded through the general operating. Then we have our utility operating and capital. And this is our water and sewer services and our water treatment plant. So these are primarily funded through fees and grants. And then we have our landfill, and this is primarily funded through fees and some grants as well. So our revenue sources. So as I just said, the general operations of the city are funded through, primarily through tax revenue and grants. And the utility functions are funded by our user fees, and that would be what we collect on our utility billing, landfill fees, and some capital grants. So for two thousand twenty-four, our general operating is going to be funded. We're looking to fund it through property taxes and the grant and lose of just over thirteen million, and that makes up fifty-nine percent. Our grant funding is just over five million, and that's twenty-three percent. Fees and charges are just under two million, which is eight-point-seven-seven percent. Reserve funding of one-point-two million. Investment income and other is just under a million. So that makes up twenty-two million for our general operating. Our utility fund, that is primarily through fees, and it's budgeted just over six million. So that shows ninety-eight percent of our revenue. Grant funding's a hundred thousand, and some reserve funding is seven, seven thousand. So our operating and utility capital funds, these funds are primarily funded through our reserves and through transfers from our operating, and that's just under eight million. So our tax dollar allocation, so this is just our general operating. So where do your tax dollars get spent? So Public Works, they primarily use sixteen percent of our tax dollars. Engineering's four, Parks is six-point-seven, Leisure Services twenty-seven percent, Fire is six-point-four, Police is just under twenty-one, and Finance and Admin is sixteen-point-seven percent. So that, what we have right now is an increase in taxes of six-point-four-seven percent, and that's six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars in additional revenue. So of this, six-hundred-and-fifty thousand, Leisure has an increase of three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Police is two-twenty-eight, Engineering is a hundred-and-eighty-five thousand, Public Works is a hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, Parks is a hundred-and-eight. Fire is just over ten thousand, and Planning and Development actually has a reduction in their budget of six thousand, and Admin and Finance has a reduction of thirty-three, three-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand. So Admin and Finance, the reason it's lower this year is because last year we had some transfers going out to other departments to fund other departments, and this year we have less, so that's why it's lower. So the two thousand twenty-four operating and capital, this does not include the utilities. Our operating budget is twenty-two million, two-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. Our capital budget is two-point-eight million, so a total of twenty-five million. It shows we have transfers to our reserves of three-hundred thousand, operating to come out of our reserves of three-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, and capital funded by reserves of just over one-point-eight million, so a total of twenty-five million. I won't go into every detail on here of our general operating fund of the revenue and expenses, but it shows where we budget this year, all of our revenue and expenses, and the equipment, and, or sorry, the capital that we plan on purchasing. On the next slide, it has our capital. So Police is looking at purchasing a new vehicle or a new fleet. Fire, some breathing apparatuses, Public Works, improvements of asphalt, traffic lights, a message board, culverts, and a storm line. Modeling the stormwater and sanitary system. This, and also looking at the upgrades to the stormwater and sanitary systems. And then Parks has Tadago Trails, the boardwalk replacement. So that's what makes up our two-point-eight million in capital. So within our general operating, we have a facilities fund, a fleet fund, and the infrastructure revitalization program. These three funds are all funded throughout the general operating. So they have transfers that go into this fund to fund it. So that's where you'd see like an internal transfer to other departments or internal transfers to fleet within the budget. So the operating budget within these is just under three-point-five million, and the capital is six-hundred-and-sixty thousand. So within this, these three, this fund, these three funds, the fleet capital that we're looking at is a truck for eighty thousand, a tandem dump truck for two-hundred-and-twenty, a sweeper for five-hundred, no, three-hundred-and-sixty-five, and a new mower. So that makes up their capital of seven-hundred-and-fifteen thousand. So the utility and landfill, so these ones are funded through user fees primarily. Their budget is, the utility and the water treatment plant is just over five million, and the landfill is one-point-three, and their capital is four-point-three million. And within here, they have, their capital is, so the water treatment plant, or sorry, the water replacement is two-hundred thousand, and, sorry, four-hundred thousand at two different spots, and the lift station upgrades are one-point-two million. The plant upgrades at the water treatment plant are one-point-seven million, and the construction of phase one of the engineered cell is a million. So that's what makes up the four-point-three in capital.
Yeah, thanks, Laura. So now I will go through two of the departments I oversee. So the first one I'll go through is our administration. So highlights for last year, for this year, is one implementation of our e-bidding. So we do bids and tenders now for all of our procurement. It's been working out quite good for us. It's been helping our bidding processes. Will we continue to do that next year as well? That's been a good highlight this year for what we've been doing. Improve emphasis on community engagement. Laura did touch base on our community survey, you know, through all the work that we did through our strat plan, you know, the reach-out we've done through what we're going to do for budget. It's all been really important to hear what the public wants, so I still look towards as a municipality. We do funding towards the Weyburn Humane Society for animal control and facility operations. Our Weyburn Builds program, a commercial incentive program. We're trying to incentivize both residential and commercial and help us grow as a community. And then we looked at established new I T contracts, so that just happened. We re-upped with W B M again. So two thousand twenty-four, so a big thing we have is our municipal election. So that comes up in November of next year, so we're a little under thirteen months away from that. Implementation of a records management system. For us, we always want to be innovative in what we do and make sure that we track what we do moving forward, everything that we do within our operations. We have new council chamber desks, as requested by council, to re-up what we do within this council chambers. I already talked about engagement. We want to continue to do community engagement. It's really important to what we do as a municipality. We want to continue to do our funding that we do for the Weyburn Humane Society. Also want to continue what we do for our Weyburn Builds and our incentive programs through the commercial incentive program. And then we're looking at doing implementation of a new online payment on our website. So Laura did talk about a reduction in our budget. There was some internal payments we're doing for that. Also, there's going to be seen an increase in the Community Building Fund. So that's actually funding we get from the federal government. So we use that towards infrastructure, and right now that's towards our infrastructure revitalization program. And also, we're anticipating an increase in municipal revenue sharing from the promise of schedule. Is there any questions on this before I move on?
Go ahead.
Thanks. Matthew, can you help us understand what records management means, roughly, kind of what that costs? And what it might, the benefit might be, I guess?
So I can speak to that. So right now, we have budgeted forty thousand dollars for records management. So right now, we don't have, we have a defined system, but we want to have a little more of a defined system, so a software program where we, as administration, secure all of our documentation. We want to make it easier for us to file and to find documentation. So it's something that's being requested more and more from the promise of schedule. Um, so it's something that's being requested more and more from the promised schedule for a more defined program. Uh, so as me as a, as administration, I've really seen a need to have that done to fulfill that requirement.
Thank you.
Anybody else? I thank you for this. Uh, as you see that we're moving forward with some of the technology. This e-payment is a, to me is a good thing move forward because I've heard for some while now that people have asked that of it, so that's good to see that we're moving forward with that. That's when the plan works. Next.
Uh, so I'll move on to planning and development. Um, so this is kind of repetitive back and forth, but uh this year a really big initiative for us is the off-site development levy initiative. Uh, so we started that uh with our firm of Ontario, uh, and we'll continue that into next year. Uh, it's a really important thing for us to look at how we do development within this community and really focus on that. And the second thing is what we see right happening right now in the community is the construction of the Wayburn General Hospital. Uh, so that started. Uh, so what we do is class three building inspections. So this is a question we get lots from the public, is that why are consulting fees so high within this budget? Um, so the budget is um around 120,000 dollars of that actually goes to a P B I, which is professional building inspectors. Um, so they actually do inspections of a class three building. We don't have that in-house, uh, but we actually collect that back. So it's, it's actually a wash. So any money that we put in, back to P B I, we actually get back from the people who are billing on that site right now. So that's a question we get lots about that, that side of that. Um, going forward for initiatives, again, the importance of the off-site development levy. Uh, so we're shooting towards a, a spring or summer of next year to have that completely done and in front of council to review and provide direction back to what they want to see. Again, the hospital, we're quite excited about that facility finally starting, and you know, I've heard lots of compliments about 50 and open up as well, so that's pretty good right now. Uh, and then electronic building inspections. Uh, we do paper right now for all of our stuff and goes back to what Mereroi just spoke about is, is getting with now. Uh, and it's, it's going to be a limited cost for us there, but we're going to look at having maybe an iPad and have everything onto and that kind of a system. Uh, we have a new building inspector in, in-house now, um, so it's really good for us to have that lined up that way. Again, um, it's a minor decrease of what we're doing. It's not a big change of what we're doing for operations. Um, it's more of the status quo within that uh department. Uh, but more, I just want to highlight that when people look at our budget, they say, why is there such a high contractor fee? That's why. It's that level three person that we have to have come in, but it is a wash that way. And you will see that budget continue to get smaller and smaller because next year we will not have the um off-site development levy, and also we'll have less fees as we move forward with the hospital projects. You're not going to see a bunch of change that way. Okay, any questions on?
Electronic building inspections that will also uh include getting some more simplified permits online?
So right now, actually, Patrick is working on that within our departments. He's been reviewing some of our municipalities, and he's working on getting some stuff that we want people to be able to go on to our website, fill out application forms and actually submit directly to us. Sometimes when municipalities actually do the, the permitting on, online, it's actually you have to fill it out, print it off, and then scan it in. We actually want that they can fill it out and then send directly to us. And now go to our general mailbox uh for planning, uh, and then there'll be an opportunity for not just Patrick, but whoever else is in that department to help assist. And uh the biggest thing we always talk about is, is customer service and timing, right? And so we want to have a quicker process how we do, how we do those things.
And again, that's where people have talked about, I say simplified things, smaller garden sheds that are just a little bit bigger and uh decks, you know, so that they can just fill out the application, get it sent in and, and then get it back within a matter of day or two. And that's what we're moving forward to.
That's the, the focus we want to do is, is to streamline that process much. Can we make it use more user friendly? Again, it's hard for people that they have to bring in a physical copy that they had to write down. We want to make it a little bit easier for people moving forward.
And again, your uh customer service is what we have talked about as one of our strategies here for this council to make better, and make it easier. Um, thank you, appreciate that. Next. Or is that, sorry, sorry, anybody else wanted anything on that?
Cool.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, we're moving on to engineering. Uh, so some of the 2023 highlights. So we did an asphalt rehabilitation at the entry of the airport in the lounge area. So this is the primary location that Stars lands, um, and this was funded partially through um the community airport program. So it was a 50/50 uh cost share on that. So the whole entryway at the airport was redone. And then uh we did do some traffic studies at 16th and First, which was uh done to establish exactly what was needed there for traffic flow, which is why we added the extra lanes. And then we have been doing engineering assessments for our roadways. So um that was the traffic delays recently where you saw a rig that was drilling holes into the roadway. So we've been doing those preemptively so we can better understand how to repair the road, and we can have um a full report on it before we go out to tender so our contractors can fully understand the requirements needed for road repairs. So in 2024 initiatives, uh, at the airport, we are looking to rehabilitate, rehabilitate the taxiways. So our taxiways have degraded, which is basically the connectors um along our hangars and also to our main runway. So we are going to do a rehabilitation on those, and once again, we will apply for cap funding as a cost share. And then also we are looking at doing the traffic studies at two different locations within the city and some engineering assessments again on the roadways. And another one that we have in the budget is a downtown revitalization conceptual plan. So we are looking at having somebody come in to design um a full plan for the downtown revitalization that will engage uh multiple uh departments within the city as well as um people in the public and businesses in the downtown. So that's showing the increased cost from 2023 to 2024.
Questions? Questions on that? If you could.
Jen, can you help us understand a little bit more about the downtown revitalization project? Kind of a timeframe around it and, you know, roughly what the budget you think this might look like?
Uh, so next year will basically be um consultation um with business owners in the downtown, the public. Um, it'll involve the engineering department, um, Public Works, Parks and Leisure, Planning and Development. So um we want to engage um with the downtown users and the businesses and come up with a plan for what we see going forward for the downtown. And it will give us a map on kind of the different projects that can be done. Um, and it could be, we'll replace the sidewalks, we'll redo the asphalt, there's the undergrounds, but then also um is there any um kind of parks upgrades we want to do from the different perspectives? So basically, our timeline for next year would be to get that conceptual plan in place, and then it can map out the investment that's needed over the next um few years to determine how to revitalize the downtown.
I just want to make mention here too on, it was good to, really good to see what we saw with the uh revitalization of the airport, and, and sometimes people wonder why we, we look at this airport. We still, still fairly well used, but also too um medevac.
Yeah.
Comes in probably three to six times a month. I don't think people realize that besides Stars, but small planes come in three to six times a month and land here. And you have to have a certain caliber of airport for them to land. Kenders, Kenders, no, Kipling, Kipling just extended their airport so that they could have them there. They were having to drive all the way to Brandon to get, to get patients picked up. Now they were able to extend it, so now they can land. Wayburn's been very fortunate that they can be landing here all the time.
Yeah, we are very fortunate with that, especially being in a rural area that we are able to provide those services for emergencies. So um that was um one thing that we've definitely uh made a priority is having those services.
Anything else, Jen, you want to talk about? No?
Nope.
Okay, next.
It's me again. Uh, Public Works. Um, so some of our 2023 highlights, so we did a traffic light replacement at Government Road and Highway 39. Um, so with that one, we replaced all the lights as well as all the um underground wiring and the controller there. Um, as well as we did multiple other projects in that area um for catch basins and stuff when we did have the road shut down. Um, the replacement of the culverts under Highway 39, so um a sinkhole actually discovered that the culverts under Highway 39 were failing, so we had a sinkhole on New Garden City Road. So we did two culvert replacements um in conjunction um with the Ministry of Highways. So that was a joint project between the two, and we got the culverts replaced because they were um basically completely gone that um there was potential for the highway to collapse in, so came a priority. Um, we also did sidewalk trip hazard repair and pedestrian accessible ramps. So we've been working our way through the city, and this has been a continued uh focus for us. So you would have seen them on Mergan Street, um, Government Road, and then Prairie Avenue were some of the bigger ones that we did. And then we uh replaced the stormlines under Railway Avenue. So you saw that we were quite busy on Railway. Um, we have had some drainage issues in the past, and so we wanted to replace all the stormlines uh under Railway Avenue in that Fifth to Eighth Street uh section. So 2024 initiatives, we are looking at a traffic light replacement at Government Road and First Avenue, and this would be similar to the one we just did in 2023. We are also looking at a traffic light installation at First Avenue and 16th Street. So that is the second phase to that upgrade of that intersection. Uh, we are doing some asphalt rehabilitation. Um, so this is First Avenue, and we are looking from Government Road to Second Street, um, and that was part of the U H C P program. And then we're doing uh additional culverts. We do have to replace a culvert under Highway 39. This is east of Government Road. So this was the third one that was identified through the studies with the Department of Highways, and that'll be a joint project again. And then we do need to replace the stormline on 16th Street from Cotto Avenue to East Avenue. Um, we are seeing failure in that stormline, and so we need to have it replaced. And then also, as a result of some of the flood incidents we have had, we are looking at some stormwater and wastewater system, system modeling and upgrades. And so we have applied for funding for this as well, um, and this is to essentially um see where our bottlenecks are and see what issues we have in the system so that we can upgrade them to um prevent any flooding issues that we've had.
Question. Jennifer, for both the traffic light installation at First Avenue and 16th Street, is that part of the urban highway connector program as well?
So um we are looking at applying to a different funding for that. You can apply under the expression of interest for that one, but then you would have to um choose to not put one of your other asphalt um insta, or expression of interest in. And because the asphalt ones are of a higher value, we go after those ones. So we are actually going to look at applying to the traffic safety fund for that intersection to put that up, and that's a different um grant program that's round. So we're going to apply for funding, just not under U H C P.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Rashid. Uh, Jennifer, the traffic light replacement at Government Road and First Avenue, I know you and I have discussed this before. Is there any possible way that we could look at putting an advanced green there just because of the sheer proximity to the high school and backed up traffic both ways?
Uh, so um in the engineering um department, I did have traffic studies in there, and one of the traffic studies is for that intersection so that we can review peak times uh related to the high school there and to see um what would be warranted at that intersection. So that is one of the traffic studies we are planning to do next year. Thank you.
Jen, uh, back to uh 16th and First again.
Yeah.
People would ask, and I know you've explained it to us, but why, why didn't we apply for the funding for the traffic lights originally? It wasn't available, or we couldn't put it under the expression of interest, or?
Um, so when we originally applied for the um expression of interest, at the time, there was no traffic study on there. So we did the traffic study after the fact, after we already had the money approved through the H C P and warranted uh the additional lanes. So the city of Wayburn actually paid for those additional lanes to go in, and that's why we'll apply for the traffic lights um in hindsight. But yeah, at the time, it was just a rebuild of the intersection that was applied through for U H C P, and we didn't have a traffic study at the time. When we went to do the rebuild, we decided to do a traffic study, which then created the extra lanes and then the traffic lights. So the funding gets approved basically like that year in advance of your construction season. So that's the hard part is adjusting once you actually get that a funding.
And I'd just like to point out that like Public Works and, and the airport and that, a huge amount of grant work, money comes in from the government for these projects. It's not just taxes alone that fund these projects, right?
Yeah, we um, a lot of it comes from Ministry of Highways, and related to that, um, they run a lot of the programs as well as the traffic safety fund. And then um like the thing that we're looking at for stormwater and wastewater, it's a disaster mitigation fund. So um our engineering department actually spends a significant amount of time applying for grant funding to ensure that we can lower our um, lower our costs as much as we can.
Good. Next.
Okay, that's still me. Uh, we'll go to Fleet. So in 2023, um, some of our highlights is we added the new crack sealer unit. So we have been able to use this um along our roadways, our pathways, as well as the airport. So this, um, you'll see it typically a lot more in the spring and fall when the cracks are opened up and they can seal them. Um, we did order an infrared asphalt recliner recently. We have not received it yet, but that will be um received for the next construction season. We added an additional wide area mower to um the Parks Department. Um, we have ordered a new water and sewer maintenance truck. It just has not quite arrived yet. Um, and then uh we did upgrade to the Fire Department's command unit. So in 2024, the initiatives we're looking at is we are looking at an additional tandem dump truck. So we are finding that we could use this at the landfill for hauling cover, um, as well as we would use it um in snow removal. That is one of the most contracted vehicles we have is a dump truck to haul to the dump sites. Um, and then another thing we're looking at is replacing the sweeper. It is um about 12 years old now, so it needs to be replaced to continue on. And then also we will be adding a new mower to the Parks Department to ensure that they can meet the increasing demand in the grass cutting.
Questions? Seeing none, go ahead. Next.
Okay, landfill. Uh, so this year we did add mobile litter fences for the work area containment and to manage blowing litter. So um we, this was a requirement on our permit to operate, and basically it is, um, you can, they're quite high and you can see them, but they basically contain the work area and contain the litter as well as our surrounding perimeter fence. So now we have two levels of litter containment. Uh, they have had rave reviews from the people at the landfill as well as we have seen a reduction in litter that is blowing off our property, so we're quite happy with that. Um, we are also in the process of the design of the Phase One Engineered Cell. So this basically, we need to operate out of an engineered cell at the landfill, and that is a requirement by the Ministry of Environment and our permit to operate. So it is a requirement in running our landfill. So in 2024, our, um, we are going to bring concrete cашен in. We do this about every two years, and that's to increase our um space at the landfill because any construction or the concrete that comes in from construction projects takes up a significant amount of space at the landfill. And then as well, we are going to start the construction of the Phase One Engineered Cell, which is based on the design that we're completing this year.
Questions? Seeing none, go ahead.
All right, infrastructure revitalization program. Uh, so this is a new program um that has replaced uh local improvements over the past couple of years. So uh 2023 highlights, so um we replaced the curb and gutter and paved Fifth Street from Cotto Avenue to Prairie Avenue. So um very much a thank to those residents as we took their street away for um a couple of months there, but it is very beautiful now. Uh, we also paved Fourth Street South at the River Park entrance. And then we did rebuild and add the additional lanes at 16th Street and First Avenue South. And then we did sidewalk replacements on Mergan Street, Prairie Avenue and Government Road. And then we did pave Brownlee Street from First Avenue Southwest to Sims Avenue, and that was an $800,000 budget. So we are targeting more in 2024. We are looking at sidewalk replacements at Cotto Avenue, Fourth Avenue, Barbara Crescent, 10th Street and Bison Avenue. We are looking to asphalt Prairie Avenue from Government Road to Mergan Street. We are looking to asphalt Railway Avenue from Fifth Street to Eighth Street. So that was the one where we replaced the undergrounds this year. We are looking to go back and fully rebuild that section uh next year. We need to replace the curb and gutter and pave Moore Street. And then also we are looking at doing some asphalt transitions on Government Road. So basically, this is where um the avenues are meeting Government Road. They've got those dips in them, so we're looking at actually um milling those sections out and providing a better transition. And so we're looking at doing from Second Avenue to Ninth Avenue South.
Discussion.
Thanks Rashid. Jen, I appreciate this, and I uh, last year when we did this project, I think the overwhelming, when I say the project, the budget, I guess, the overwhelming message from, that I heard anyways, and I think a lot of us did, was infrastructure was the priority for folks in town, and you've done a bang-up job, I think, you and your department. So I, I guess my question is kind of two things, but both the same question. How confident are you in your ability to get all of the things needed to get these projects done next year? And how happy are you with the progress on the projects that you started this year?
If I, my department receives a budget, we will get it done. Um, we are very aggressive in our R F P and our tendering process. We are actually building all the information, collecting all the data based on what we presented here that if we do receive the budget, basically the R F P will um be sent out basically as soon as we see, receive budget approval, so it can go out promptly and so that we can start at the very beginning of construction season. Um, and I think we, um, this year we had some amazing contractors as well as some amazing, amazing project managers and um the whole city staff stepping up to a to assist contractors whenever needed. Um, so we are very happy with everything that went on this year. And I think um, we've established some really great relationships and I think have made some happy residents.
I would agree. And I think the 16th Street intersection is a very good example of how well it worked, considering, you know, some hurdles that were, to say the least. So this is exciting. I think it's, it's, should be what we do with our city. I appreciate it.
Anything else? I was just going to say that, and you can correct me on this one, but if uh, people may have missed it, that we're doing something quite a bit different on our uh infrastructure here, that we're actually milling the streets down a lot and kind of making sure we're giving better roads as opposed to just laying an inch of asphalt on top of two.
Yeah. So something that we've done is we actually, on all roads that we are planning to come into a rehabilitation, we also look at the curb and gutter. Um, and the big thing for replacing curb and gutter despite the expense of it is it um, it, it, it basically makes it so you have proper drainage. And when you don't have um your proper curb and gutter, if you don't have the proper drainage, basically that water gets into your roadway and it'll deteriorate it significantly faster than when you do the curb and gutter. So that's been one of our things is we're now putting in proper drainage and proper curb and gutter to ensure that when we do go back and rebuild these roads, that um, that they are actually going to last longer.
And so although, although that seems like there's a lot of money being spent on it, it's being actually, we're doing for a long range term look at stuff and not just a quick fix, look, uh, make it look nice for a year or two. Correct?
Yep.
Next.
Kate, still me. I'll go on to utilities. Um, so one of our highlights has been uh the construction of Lift Station Three. Um, so this one has been going on for quite a few um years now um through the design and the construction phase. And it's actually set to start commissioning this week. So um, this is a big one, um, a big milestone for us. So we are hoping for good weather and um everything to work in our favor uh this week for the commissioning of that lift station number three. So it was replacing a 1960s uh lift station. So it's, it's a big project for us. Um, so the design of the upgrades at Lift Station One and Lagoon for flood mitigation. So this was step one, um, based on the floods that we did have to go back and say, where are bottlenecks? Um, because we did have to um discharge Lift Station Number One um because it could not be handled at the Lagoon and at the Lift Station. So we um have been doing the design there and we will be looking um towards for that. And then we did a water main placement on Railway Avenue and Duncan Drive. And then as well, we've done numerous replacements of valves, catch basins and hydrants. So you would have seen um those going on around the city, which is part of our maintenance program. So then in 2024, we are looking at the construction of the upgrades at Lift Station One and the Lagoon for that flood mitigation. So this year has been the design, next year would be the implementation of that. We are looking at water main replacement on Railway Avenue and Moore Street. So Railway will just be a continuation on from where we were. So um, this section that was done was a fifth to eighth section. We will be looking at eighth to tenth going forward. And then as well as Moore Street, because it is set to be paved. Uh, we did have a sewer replacement on that. So we are now looking at doing the uh water main before we replay, or before we paved that street. And then the continued investment in valves, catch basins and hydrants. And the biggest thing with these is we need to ensure that they'll operate when we need them, so.
Questions? Okay, next.
Me. I'm almost done. Um, so next is the water treatment plant. So we have had the commissioning and operation of CO2 and ammonia systems to improve our water quality and our compliance with our permit. So you'll hear me talk about uh T H M and H A As basically um because we pull from nickel, it's a high in organics. And we um during peak season of organics, we cannot meet the compliance with the permit for those um, those uh components. So that was the first two steps with the CO2 and the ammonia systems. And then additionally, we've done repairs on Albert Douglas Dam as per the 2022 inspection. So basically um, the dam is what keeps our water there. So that one needs to be repaired. So we are kind of now on a repair plan going forward to continue investing in that based on the inspection we did in 2022. Next up for the water treatment plant next year is the addition of powder activated carbon. So this is the continuation of the first two projects with the CO2 and ammonia. And this is to once again lower our T H M even further because we're, we're not quite there yet. So we knew this was a multi-phase project to see if we could get there with the two first pieces. The thing with powder activated carbon is it actually can improve our taste and reduce our odor. So that is a, the third one in line to the um improvements we've done in the past years. And then we are going to continue our repairs on Albert Douglas Dam. So I would suspect we'll see those for a few years now because we've been spacing out the repairs.
Questions? Okay, next.
I turn, give you a break. Bar's set pretty high here. Um, so uh, I will be going over the leisure parks and the facilities uh budget highlights and initiatives for 2023 and 2024. Uh, so I'll start with leisure and parks. So 2023 highlights, um, we focused a lot of what we do on the uh, the new vision that's just been put forward by the City of Wayburn, which is a community for all. So you'll see through the, the leisure budget um both in 2023 and 2024, we've put a lot of emphasis on, on that piece. So in 2023, we focused on uh getting the River Park Campground online onto an online booking system to modernize things there. Um, we expanded the Tadagwa Trail um and we did, did some more maintenance uh to the, the trail as well. Um, we have additional inclusive programming initiatives now taking place in the summer at both uh the Wayburn Leisure Center and the Spark Center. Um, we've increased our newcomers programming and we've also transitioned uh our swimming programming to the Life Saving Society, which was a major onboarding process. Um, and then also we're really focusing on creating new and enhanced partnerships with community organizations, with nonprofits and such. So in 2024, uh, some of the initiatives we're looking at, we've seen an increase uh to the regional uh library per capita amount. So there's an increase in public library funding happening. Um, we're going to continue our high level of service that we're offering now and look to expand on those programs wherever we can through diversifying our, our, our program availability and our approach on that. Uh, on the park side, we will be replacing the boardwalk pathway uh which runs along the river. And we're also doing some planning pieces in parks as well with the former Hague uh school property, some uh concept planning and some community engagement on that uh parcel of land so that we can make some good investments in the future. Uh, so you'll notice an increase uh to the leisure budget. Uh, a, a lot of the increase that we see is based off of uh materials and supplies and wages uh and utilities. Those are the big three. We do what we can through our rates and fees to, to offset those expenses as much as we can. And we, we are budgeting for um higher revenues uh from our facilities. However, with all the increases that we're seeing, with everything that we do operating in our many buildings, uh, we're expecting some higher costs. And that goes the same with parks. Uh, much of our increases there is on staffing as well as materials and supplies and whatnot. Um, we have up to 130 employees in the Parks and Leisure Services Department at peak season. Um, so uh, the recent increase to minimum wage and some other uh things going on, we are expecting to see uh higher wages going out next year. The minimum wage piece in particular, we have, we, we employ a lot of young uh students and young adults through our programs and through our facilities. And we're seeing a, an increase in there, definitely.
Any questions?
Thanks, Bishop Andrew. I, I, I know you have this answer, but I just, I need to hear you say it because we had the mountain bike folks in here a little while ago. Please help us do more. You're adding Hague School now, gonna need more, 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 more. So what sort of, I, I mean, I see your budget increases here and they're, they're not insignificant, but um, I don't know, is it a three or a five year sort of lookout? Do you see that you're going to need a lot more, I guess, in terms of personnel, equipment as our, because second only to infrastructure, the other thing we hear people talk about is our leisure services in our community, in not that there isn't enough or whatever, but just to keep them up and, and maybe do a little bit more all the time. So I guess I'm just kind of looking to what you think the next three to five years in your department is going to look like.
Correct. Yeah, so there's always a balance that we have to weigh out with our services, what we provide and what we are capable of providing with what we have. Um, for parks in particular, uh, Jen mentioned in the Fleet, we ordered a wide area mower uh last year. That was an additional mower uh required um for some additional mowing, with, one being the former Hague School property, the other being Riverwood as, as it onboards with the city as well. We try to do what we can to partner as much as we can with our user groups um at all of our facilities to try to lighten the load off the city. And we're, that's another piece why it's so important for us to increase our partnerships is try to um engage those groups to assist us in fundraising and investments back into our facilities. I don't believe that we're going to see a huge increase in staffing moving forward in the next three to five years. I think what we are doing though, uh, moving forward here into 2024 is we are taking a hard look at our operations and trying to find all the efficiencies that we can so that maybe we can provide additional services without um hindering ourselves too much.
I appreciate that answer. Thank you very much.
Andrew, you talked about partners and user groups and those types of things. Just maybe for um the general public, what user groups have fees? And what user groups does the city pick up the tab on when it comes to uh the cost of maintaining and, and developing the property?
Okay. So currently all this, all user groups that use our indoor facilities pay a user fee, uh, which we said on a three-year rate review. I believe the next rate review comes up in 2025. So we'll start working on that and present that to council in 2024. Our current users of our field space, our field spaces, our ball dimes, our, our soccer fields, um, even our tennis courts to a degree, they are provided free access to those grounds. However, we do what we can uh to have them contribute in some way. So you'll see minor ball consistently fundraising towards uh facility enhancements, uh that type of thing. So we try to, to um, to look after some of those future initiatives but with partnerships of those groups. But uh, so your minor ball, your minor soccer, um, basically any group using our park space is not currently paying a user fee per se. They are providing something back to us in other ways, uh, but they're not providing a per hour fee.
Okay, thank you. And that just speaks to strong partnerships, right?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
What else? I was just going to say on that same note, two things on that same note. Andrew is that uh, we're quite a bit different than, unlike uh Regina, who charge user groups a fee for using the ball dimes and that.
Yeah, we're, we're very, we have a very unique situation here in Wayburn, to be honest. Uh, we're one of the few in Saskatchewan that operate the way we do by not charging those per hour, per capita fees back to those user groups. So um, it is something that we've built up through the use, through the years with, with those partnerships. But it is something that uh we should maybe consider moving forward. Um, if we continue to see these rising costs, we need to find some revenue wherever we can just to invest back into our facilities. Because eventually, you know, if we don't stay on top of things, it could turn into a liability. But with that being said, we also have to look back at the staffing question that I was just asked. And if we start charging hourly rates on our outdoor facilities, there may be heightened service expectations as well from our groups. So we have to weigh that out.
And that's where technology comes in to play too, where you look at these robotic lawnmowers where the, which costs, you know, the price of uh, half the price of what it would hire, it costs to hire a student for the summertime to, to just buy and then it operates on its own. So, which is unfortunate, not employing, but at the same time, you're being more effective and efficient with your money that's, that's going into it. So things that we have to look towards in the future through robotics and, and such.
Yeah, and we have a good group in our department. We're always looking at what's next and how we can save a little bit money to go a little further. Even just with how we've digitized things lately is kind of a good telltale sign in how we've done that, so.
I remember seeing a robotic uh floor cleaner in a, one of the rinks in Calgary. And they just clean, so there's, and again, it looks, I know it's really, you guys look over here smiling going, wow, but that's the technology that's out there and that's the technology. And that's how they're saving costs on wages. As wages go up, they just switch it over to something else that works around differently. Even have robotic uh waitresses in some of the hotel, in some of the restaurants in China now. Yes, so it's, it's the way it goes forward. Next.
Okay, so onto our facilities. So facilities and leisure, there's a lot that ties in together. However, uh, we also look after all city buildings. Uh, so the Fire Department, the Public Works Building, City Hall. Um, basically all, all buildings other than the water treatment plant and then the lift stations of specialized public utility buildings. Uh, so just a, a few highlights from 2023, uh, some of the big ticket items. So um, Tom's Andy Sports Arena and Crescent Point Place chiller replacement. Uh, so we were able to replace the arena chiller, uh, 220 ton ammonia chiller uh in time for the season, so we didn't miss a beat over there. Uh, it's been going well and we'll get another 25 years out of our ice plant thanks to that. Um, another big piece that we're looking at is our uh ongoing roof replacement program in 2023. Uh, we had highlighted the uh Sports Arena and the Sioux Line uh museum roof replacements. Um, so the contractor is actually just on site right now, looking after the Sioux Line and, or after the Sports Arena story, and then they'll be moving over to the Sioux Line. Um, not listed in here, we also did some preliminary work at the library to get our ducks in a row so that moving into 2024, we can address the library roof, which has caused us some grief in previous years. Uh, so 2024 initiatives, um, we are looking at some extensive long-term leisure planning and facility studies. Uh, so two of our facilities that we're looking to have uh some engineers and architects come through and assess will be the Wayburn Leisure Center um and Crescent Point Place. Uh, so we're going to do a, a full study on both facilities and try to identify um current life cycles and where investments may need to go and what our plans are moving forward so that we can be prepared and start putting together something. Um, so if ever grants come along or uh anything like that comes forward, we can take advantage of it. Um, and it'll also help us identify those immediate things that we need to look at so we can avoid uh shutdowns in the next near future. Uh, I also mentioned it, so the library roof replacement, we have about $185,000 allocated to that as well um over a large section of roof uh that we hope to get done early in the, the spring. Uh, sticking with roofs, we want to assess all city facilities so that we can start identifying these issues uh a, a little proactively uh so we don't get rained on in our offices or in our common areas. Um, so we'll look at working through all city buildings with that. Um, and then we also need to wrap up the air hand, land and purification upgrades at the Wayburn Fire Hall.
Questions? Okay, going forward, next. Fire Services Chief?
Good evening. In 2023, a few of our highlights are that uh we're contracted by the surrounding rural municipalities to provide firefighting services out in the country and to buy time and prevent future damage and extensive damage to our city highway fire truck. We converted the city's old mechanic truck into a wildland firefighting apparatus. Uh, we acquired the use of the police side by side to assist with the wildland firefighting. So we had to acquire a trailer for moving that out into the country. As well, radio repeater to enhance radio signal in the area as our current system gave us no radio communications once we left city limits. Uh, we also acquired, purchased a couple thermal imaging cameras to assist with life stability and finding hotspots, reduce time on scene uh and for victim survival. We also had to replace 10 S E B A air cylinders as they have reached their life expectancy of 15 years. Looking forward into 2024, we are looking at buying four breathing apparatus. Um, we don't have enough currently. There is multiple of fire trucks that don't, aren't equipped with breathing apparatus. There is cheaper on the market uh that is rated for firefighting service. Though they are different brand names, nothing's interchangeable. So once you start on one brand name, you're married to that brand name. So that's, that's what we're looking for in 2024.
Questions?
Thanks, Bishop. I don't have a question so much as a comment, uh, and that's to commend you on your resourcefulness for that wildland firefighting unit. Um, last year you had it in your budget and it didn't happen and you were resourceful and I appreciate that, so thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely, and it's it's buying us some time until we can replace it uh because if we wreck our fire engine, they're not readily available and it would take us a year or more if not to replace that thing. So it's something we have to baby and take care of.
No, nothing else, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Next. Police Services.
Your Worship, counselors, Your Honor. In Chief London's absence, you have me. Some highlights from two thousand and twenty three, our CTSS vehicle, the Combined Traffic Services Saskatchewan uh finally arrived. There was a long delay, of course, with the COVID and and the production of it. This one will be incorporated with the K nine kennel. Specialized training, it's ongoing. We have one D R E or a drug recognition uh expert right now. We have two currently in training, they're in Regina and they'll be they'll be going to Vancouver for the second part of their training here shortly. Joint Tactical Support Team, that's our joint team with Esteban Police Service, uh that is continuous training every month and annual recertifications. Of course, that's uh something that every police officer in Saskatchewan has to do. Facilities, repair and maintenance, uh we had a couple of issues in two thousand and twenty three that we're taking care of the best we can and that's mostly due with the air conditioning and some of the boiler repair and maintenance. Two thousand and twenty four initiatives, uh we have a or we plan to have a new police vehicle. That would be the first one that the actual Wayburn Police Service has purchased in approximately five or six years. Facilities, repair and maintenance program, the air conditioner needs a full replacement. And uh I believe the collective bargaining agreement is on the table here very shortly. Members of the board and the association will be meeting very soon. And that's it from the Wayburn Police.
Questions? Mr. Jankie? Or Mr. Van Betje first and then Mr. Jankie?
Brendan, at a very high level, can you tell us why it's so important to have drug recognition experts?
Uh I think in today's world, it's very obvious if you uh see the news releases and stuff coming out. Drugs, whether you think they're more prevalent, more dangerous, um but they're far more in in the public's eye now than we're dealing with them lots. So drug recognition experts, um a lot of the alcohol driving or sorry, impaired driving used to be based on what we had for tools to uh test and I guess charge for impaired driving for the level of alcohol. The instruments that we have now, whether it be the Drager or the Sotox, which tests for drugs, uh the intoxic, I should say intoxication by drug, is far more advanced and drug recognition experts are just another tool in our toolbox to recognize that.
It's great, thank you.
Yeah, not not a question, but.
Thanks very much, Brendan. I'd just like to uh acknowledge a couple of members of our public from our police board. Ron Met, uh Ron McCormick is here, our chair, and Krista Hulick is another member. And then Barclay Charlton is also a member of the police board. So if you ever see them on the street, say hi and say thanks for their dedication because it's not an easy job. It's a it's a it's a tough job and takes a lot of time, so thank you.
And I did plan to introduce them, they've been my support sitting here this whole time, but yes, thanks, Mel.
Any other questions or?
No, we're good for this side.
Thank you.
Back to me.
Yes.
So how will our tax increase of six hundred and fifty thousand be collected? So three hundred and seventeen thousand of it will be in the mail rate on general operations or for the general operations. Hundred and nineteen will be on the mail rate, that's um an increase for the emergency services and snow removal. And two hundred and thirteen will be for on base tax. So that equates to a fifty dollar increase in base tax. The next slide shows what the impact will be on the average residence um home assessed at three hundred thousand. So it equates to about ten dollars per month and it's about seventy dollars on municipal tax and fifty dollars on base tax. So a total of a hundred and twenty dollars, which would be ten bucks per month in the average home. And that is about it. So we're planning to have an open house on November seventh. This is an opportunity for public to engage and provide some feedback. Budget discussions will be at the December or November twenty seventh council meeting and delegations may appear. And we're hoping to have the final budget approved at the December eleventh council meeting.
Colton Combs, yes, Mr. Higgs?
I guess from from my perspective, I'd like to thank the management for putting this package together that we can take to the November seventh um consultation because uh it's in a great format, easy to read, easy to figure it out. And then when you go back to one of the first pages, there's a huge challenge when the citizen survey comes back and it says we want to reduce spending, we want to maintain or increase capital and increase the level of service. So that in itself is a struggle. So I appreciate this and I look forward to the feedback from the residents.
Mr. Richards?
I would totally agree with what Counselor Higgs said. This is a great presentation, it's better every year, so thank you, Laura, for that. The question that I have, I'll I'll direct it to the city manager and he may elect to defer to others and that's fine. My question is this, so we're going out to our friends and neighbors, asking everybody for an additional ten dollars a month. Equals about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in new revenue uh that tax increase will yield. So far, everything I've said is accurate? Okay, good. So I guess, I know this might be hard to answer, but can you give us a sense how much of that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is 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 new services or is it new projects? Or is it simply, uh and I I didn't see, but I don't think there's any or if not, there's maybe only one new position. So how much of this is going to say wages or salaries and how much of this is going to uh services or or projects?
Thanks, Councilor Richards. So um it it's a mix. So I'll start one with the question about um new hires. So direction for us is is always a higher level of service, but we have to look at, you know, it it's hard to get to get those new employees in. So there's only one new position in this entire budget and it is uh a summer student for parks. And it's because of the level of green space that we're receiving over above what was being requested tonight. So we talked about Hague School, we talked about the Riverwood Development, um you know, the the increased usage in in our in our park space. It's only one position, that's all we have. So there's something else we put in within this budget. The other key things that you see is is infrastructure. I think every presentation from every department was almost talking about infrastructure, infrastructure, infrastructure. We heard it loud and clear uh from from you as council, we've heard loud and clear from the residents is that they want to see more infrastructure. The last thing is is that a part of that increased funds is is we do have uh three collective agreements that are actually expiring this year. We have our QB, our fire and our police all expiring here in December thirty first. We will see increased raises um within that and that's expected, right? And you also see that within our scope, that's all expected. So so to answer your que- questions as clearly as I can.
Yeah.
Is that it's a it's a mixed bag. The biggest thing we're seeing is what we're taking from the request of the tax base and even from our reserves for infrastructure. You know, you look at and Jen did a great job tonight going through her presentation and she went through six different areas and and every one of those areas talked about between our landfill to our to our water, to our utilities, to to our roads, like infrastructure in in all all municipalities is is getting to that point where you have to do that. And grant funding is is there and and again, I appreciate the question asked about grants tonight. You know, the the work that we're trying to do with both provincial, federal governments to get more grant funding and the lobbying that has to happen from this council to to have that happen as well, infrastructure is a huge demand. So that's the biggest thing I'm seeing is is one, infrastructure demand and two is what we see just for the cost we have to do to to make sure we maintain our staff and that we have, but we made a conscious decision that we're not to add more staff. And it goes back to what Counselor Higgs just talked about is that, you know, you have those differing demands from what's happening. And it's hard, it's hard, it's hard to get that level of service you want to provide people. We have a very strong staff um all throughout the whole operations and we want to provide that level of service. But we also want to make sure that our our operations are there as well, right? The tax base works hard for their dollars and we have to make sure that we provide what we have to back to them that way. It's the most important thing that way. Before I'm done, I do also want to thank Paige Tenval for her her presentation. She worked on this presentation, did all this work with Laura. You told me you did this.
No.
If you guys know me by now, this is very far from me, but um a really great job from from them. And I also want to applaud um all levels of our our operations um to take the work to do this. There's a lot of work that goes into putting this budget in place. We have changed how we do our our budgeting, um you know, we want to have a little more open process. We also want to get things done so we can be able to purchase what we have to move forward. And um the challenge was provide to Jen, Jen answered the question that I thought she would tonight is that, can you do these projects? Yes, and then we know that there's a want right now to have that done. And this is this is how it's gonna be for the next little bit. There's there's an infrastructure deficit, there's a need for higher level of service and this is what we're seeing. It's it's not easy to 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 go through everything, but there's lots of things we have to do as a municipality moving forward.
Just want to to kind of add one thing to, as I guess the the as mayor, the leading political figure here in Wayburn and 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 Matthew, both of us go to these the big city mayor's meetings. And at those meetings, we realize that there's a terrific amount of ins and outs on grants, on all that stuff. There's a lot of stuff, it just doesn't simply say, government just doesn't hand over grants uh easily to the cities. I was at one meeting and one of the older uh experienced gentlemen that was there giving, talking about asset management, said years back, nineteen eighties, twenty four cents of every dollar collected and taxation in Canada was given to the cities. And now it's down to eight cents. So our federal governments, provincial governments have dropped immensely what they're handing to the cities. Not that they're not going to increase it again, but at the same time, we are at the beck and of what we are, what we can do. If we get more grants, if, say, the gas tax increases, the budget, uh the premier decides that there's a lot more money in the budget, a surplus of money, they could hand out more money and we can get more things done within the city. But we are basing our budget on what past results were and we are hopeful with anticipation for the future. But at the same time, this, we are only, we are a child of the government and that is most certainly uh both governments. They're mainly provincial but also the federal government and we can do only a certain amount taxation. The city taxes only represent a small fraction of what can be done within the city here. Go ahead, Mel.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, I'd just like to add that I'd like to thank Matthew as the main steward and every uh different department in the whole in this city. I think they do a great job. I think every year that I see, they they operate as efficiently as they can on the things that they can control. Most of the increases we have are are on like, say, additional infrastructure or projects and stuff that is just beyond our control. But the items that they do control, they operate as efficiently, I believe as efficiently as possible and they watch every dollar. That being said, you know, I encourage people to come out on November seventh, uh pose any questions, ask, you know, come prepared and we'll show you what we can as plain and simple as we can so that you understand where the dollars are spent in your community.
That being said, we'll move forward to inquiries and announcements. Anything?
Thank you, Worship. I just wanted to send a huge thank you out to the community. The semi annual book sale was held last weekend. There was a lot of books and a lot came in and a lot went right back out. So thank you to everybody who volunteered. Special shout out to Joanne Smith, who's the teen programmer. She had so many teenagers in there to help carry boxes and it made my life a lot easier. So thank you again and hopefully I'll have a proper total for everyone at the next meeting.
Well?
Yeah, like the uh earlier this evening, we passed a bylaw for Sarah's school. And I uh the couple, the people that are involved with this, I just thank them for their faith in Wayburn and I encourage them to move forward and hopefully they can get all the pieces in place because I think what they're proposing is something that's needed in the city of Wayburn and I I hope they're able to move forward with it as soon as possible.
And one uh final thing, we're cold weather coming in on the weekend, but our, I know the uh comp eagles, they moved into semifinals, they're gonna have their final game again. It is so great to see uh our high school uh team uh being placed like third in Canada and they are moving into the next round of playoffs to uh play your old alma mater. You should be out there in your comp, oh, your football jacket, Mr. Jankie, where are you?
Your Worship, I am pleased to report that my football jacket still fits.
Oh, and so let's whoever can make it and make the the. So we, but that is at one o'clock, I believe, at the Delcot Field. And so it's very, it was a beautiful foot uh day last game. And so it was great to uh go and uh very proud of all the comp school players doing this here. Leading uh putting Wayburn on the mat in a positive way, that's most certainly for sure. Anything else? With that, I will no notice of motion, so I will call this meeting adjourned.
If you'd like to share your feedback on the program you just watched, contact us today.